We will rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ashley, you want to take the roll call?
Mike Hobson?
Here.
Mike Hobson?
Here.
Michelle Blythe?
Here.
Jan Schweddy?
Here.
Marilyn Early?
Here.
Jessica Stifels?
Here.
Deborah Nelson?
Here.
Dawn Danny?
Here.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second?
Question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Imposed? Okay, we have two proclamations this evening. The first one is National EMS Week. Marilyn, would you like to read the proclamation?
Yes. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating National Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, Barbara Tolbert, Mayor of Arlington, in recognition of this event, does hereby proclaim the week of May 16th through May 22nd, 2021, as National Emergency Medical Services Week in Arlington, Washington. And with the theme "This is EMS: Caring for Our Communities", the mayor encourages the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
Thank you, Marilyn. We should also mention that we're thankful to the EMS personnel for supporting the vaccination side at Arlington.
Yes.
Important work as well. It's also National Public Works Week. And Deborah, do you want to read the proclamation for National Public Works Week?
Yes, happy to. Proclamation for National Public Works Week. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Arlington. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Arlington to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, Barbara Tolbert, Mayor of Arlington, does hereby proclaim the week, May 16th to the 22nd, 2021, as National Public Works Week in Arlington, Washington. With this year's theme, "Stronger Together", the mayor calls upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issue involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life.
Thank you, Deborah. We didn't have any members of the public that wish to speak to the council this evening.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the May 3rd and May 10th, 2021 council meetings, as well as the accounts payable, approval of EFT payments and claims checks number 102731 through 102843 dated May 4th, 2021 through May 17th, 2021, for $1,4,782.30, and approval of payroll EFT payments and checks numbers 30081 through 30086 dated April 1st, 2021 through April 30th, 2021, for $1,580,819, as well as change order number two for Fire Station 48, the resolution declaring used information technology equipment as surplus and authorizing their sale, and change order number four for the 204th Street Roundabout.
Second? Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Imposed? Okay, so we'll move into our new business. And our first item this evening is the low bid award for 173rd Street, Phase One, Jim Kelly.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, council members. This item before you is the request to award the 173rd Street Phase One contract to Reese Construction as the certified low bidder with a bid of $2,135,740.19. The 173rd project has been a project the city's been working on for many years. We have not been able to fund the entire project length, so we have broken it down into phases. This first phase will be Phase One, and it will extend from Smokey Point Boulevard east to a little bit past 40th Avenue. We publicly bid the project in April. We received approximately seven bids. The lowest qualified bidder was from Reese Construction, as I said, with a bid in the amount of $2,135,740.19. We are recommending that the city award the contract to Reese Construction for that amount.
Thank you, Jim. Are there any questions or comments from the council?
Okay, if there are no more questions, I move to award the 173rd Street Phase One project to Reese Construction Company in the amount of $2,135,740.19 and authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract.
Second? Question? Those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, it passes unanimously. It'll be exciting to see that project start to come to fruition.
One thing that I want to point out to council I met with the contractor this evening on the way home, they have the pipe for the UPP project, the utility and paper preservation project. They're struggling to get pipe for the 173rd project. They're two months out on getting pipe.
Ooh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had read something about that.
A lot of, oh. A lot of the fittings and castings are made in India, and India is basically shut down.
Right.
Yes, they're letting us know.
So.
That. Our next item is the supplement number one to the SCJ Alliance contract for Island Crossing Roundabout Design, Jim Kelly.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and council members. This item before you is change order number one, amendment number one to the SCJ Design Contract for the SR 530 and Smokey Point Boulevard Roundabout Project. The items covered under this project are the installation of an intelligent traffic system as requested by WashDOT, because SR 530 is a state route, and additional design work for the installation of utilities to abutting properties, so we do not have to get back out in the road and install utilities when the time comes. I have tried to research why WashDOT is requesting cameras and traffic counters at a roundabout, but I have not been able to get any answer.
I just have one question, Jim. So since we don't have the funding for 530, the transportation project, so does it look like 59th and 211th are going to be done before Island Crossing?
That's a very good question. If the funding, we have two possible sources of funding. One from the federal government. We submitted a transportation infrastructure request package, and it is being supported by Congresswoman Del Benny. And we also submitted legislative funding request to the state transportation funding package, which is still alive from what I hear. But 59th and 211th are already fully funded for design and construction, so.
Yeah. So, another question. So on 211th, I know that the road from 67th down to 530 needs to be widened or something done. Are we looking at trying to get that done at the same time they do the roundabout?
It has been on our list of long-range planning projects. Due to staffing levels right now, it's getting nudged out by other projects.
Okay, thank you.
Questions or comments?
Okay, if none, I move to approve the supplement to the SCJ Alliance contract for design services for the SR 530 Island Crossing Roundabout Project and authorize the mayor to sign the contract supplement.
Second?
Question?
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the supplement passes unanimously. Jim, if WashDOT does get back to you at a future date to understand the logic of the ITS system, it'd be great for you to share that with us.
Oh, most definitely.
Thank you. Our next item is the resolution to amend the cemetery fee schedule.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and council members. The Arlington Cemetery is a valuable asset to the community inasmuch as it completes life here in Arlington. And the city takes a lot of pride in the cemetery. We try to make it affordable to our customers and to the citizens, and we do our best to keep very beautiful grounds and cemetery that's open to the public at all times, 24 hours a day. The cemetery has not raised prices in over 10 years, and we need to raise some prices to keep pace with cost of living and also the rising prices of products that we buy for the cemetery. To that extent, the cemetery board requested that the city do a fee analysis. We performed a fee analysis, and while performing analysis on cost of services provided, it's difficult to do so because openings and closings vary in time so greatly. So the best way to do an analysis is to do a benchmarking analysis, and that is to compare your service prices to cemeteries of equal size and proximity. We looked around, and Marysville Cemetery is the most equivalent to the Arlington Cemetery. We evaluated our prices, and we have adjusted them, raising several of those items for opening and closings and for products that we purchase and resell to the citizens. And the price increases that we are proposing still are less than any of the cemeteries around, be it in Bellingham, Burlington, or Marysville. The cemetery board has reviewed the memo that we've prepared, and they are recommending that council accept the new fee increase. At the same time, we have discussed the issue with varied opening and closing times with the cemetery board and with city staff who work the opening and closings, and we've looked at what other cemeteries do. It is easier in a lot of other cemeteries to have fixed opening and closing times. We've looked at various times, AM and PM, and weekend schedules. We worked out a very good schedule with the MNO Department, which does the opening and closings. And we are recommending rule changes, specific changes to the cemetery rules to amend our opening and closing times to have a fixed AM opening time, a fixed PM opening time, and the same opening and closing times for weekend services. Those recommendations are also approved by the cemetery board, and they're asking me to bring these forward to council for approval.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions or comments from the council? Jessica?
Well, I just know that we have kind of been watching the cemetery budget for a while because it's kind of just been skimming, being able to even just pay for itself. So I know it was about time for this, and it doesn't look like we raised the rates too high where it's going to hurt somebody in that time. So I appreciate the research you and your department did to get this equaled up a little bit more. So just wanted to say I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay, well, I think I made a comment last week, but I'll say it again, that we have an excellent cemetery board that did this work and have been working on that budget, I know, Jessica. So I just again want to publicly say thank you to the board. All right, so I move to approve the changes to the cemetery rules and amendment to the city fee resolution as recommended by the cemetery board and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
Second?
Question?
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Imposed? All right, Jim, thank the cemetery board for their work and let them know it passed unanimously.
I will do that, Madam Mayor and council members. Thank you very much.
Our final item this evening is the modification to the salary schedule for non-representative employees for 2021, James Tree Fry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. It came before you tonight in follow-up to the workshop presentation back on May 10th for inclusion of two new positions onto the non-representative pay plan that was most recently updated on April 19th. The first being the Planning Manager for Community Economic Development, the second being the Enterprise Data and Technology Manager for Public Works. The Planning Manager would be a new position. We have posted that contingent on adoption by council of the new salary range and the non-representative schedule. And the Enterprise Data and Technology Manager would be reclassification of an existing position occupied by Katie Heim, the GIS manager. I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you might have.
I have one, James. On the steps, do people start at different steps depending on their experience and knowledge and all that stuff? Everybody doesn't just start on step one, is that correct?
Correct. And usually, it's like in the case of a reclassification, and, you know, so let's use the Enterprise Data and Technology Manager, for example. Based on the existing range that that position is at currently, like say Range J, the incumbent is near the top end of the pay band for that, but they would start off probably, you know, in the first few steps, probably step three of the new range if reclassified or promoted. And the same thing too with the Planning Manager. We've gone through recruitment, and for the person that we bring out for that position, it'll be within the first three steps of that range if it's approved by council.
Okay, thank you.
And it honestly varies by recruitment. When we do make postings, you know, consistent with state law, we put people on the pay band consistent with their experience and education compared with other incumbent staff, like we said, similarly situated within the city.
I have a question.
Yeah, we touched on this last week, but would you go over again why by hiring two new, establishing two new positions, it does not have any impact on the budget?
Yeah, so in the case of both of these positions, with the Planning Manager, Josh Grandlinard, who is the Planner Two in Community Economic Development, resigned as of May 3rd. With the Planning Manager, we would look to bring them on the 1st of June. We have salary savings for that month of May. It would be the intent of Mark Hayes, the Community Economic Development Director, to ask for the additional bargaining position later on this year as in addition to the budget or a new FTE. And the Planning Manager would fill in for those duties for a few months until that came back before council and potentially was filled. And then for the public works position, again, same thing. The incumbent is already at the top end of the range for the position that they hold. They would come in at a lower, you know, different step on, a lower step on the new range. And we have budget allocated for additional GIS seasonal hours. We had put out an offer. We were a little bit delayed in getting that posted and hired. That was one of the new classifications that we came to council for on April 19th. And we put out an offer last week to the top candidate for that position. They declined that position. So we've contacted the number two person, put them through background and make them an offer, but we'll have salary savings basically for not being able to staff that position for the planned two months that makes up the budget there for the current two-year budget cycle.
So it doesn't have any impact on the budget this year, but in future years it will?
Correct. And it's the same thing with step increases that those, you know, people would have had potentially in the ranges to, like in the case of the incumbent, she still had, I think, one more step in the range. So that would have got up next year anyway, but it does have a higher outward cost potentially as they move up through the steps in that higher range. Okay, yep.
Any other questions or comments on the salary schedule change?
Okay. I move to approve the modification to the salary schedule for non-representative employees for 2021.
Second?
Question?
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Imposed?
No.
All right. It passes the vote of six to one. Thank you, James.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any comments from council members this evening? Don and then Mike.
First, the first comment I've got is this weekend, we had one of our first Arlington Main Street cruises with a whole bunch of classic cars. It seemed to be a pretty good crowd, and there seemed to be quite a few people hitting the local restaurants. And it would have been nice to see more stores open for all the people that were downtown, but it turned, looked like it was a pretty good time for everybody. Everybody seemed to have fun. My next item is, I've had several people contact me about the crosswalks at the Crosswalk and again at Arlington Hardware. And they've been asking if there's any way the city could put some kind of a flashing light there for pedestrians to utilize within their cross because people are parking so close to the intersections. By the time they get out there, they're almost getting hit. I had three or four people just alone told me that they had to jump out of the way of a car.
I get calls on that too, Don, all the time. We've worked on crosswalk improvement for years.
Yeah, one of the improvements for safety that are better than the flashing lights even, Don, would be bulbouts. And we've designed that at one point when Olympic was rebuilt because it brings people past the car so that they're more visible. So I know, yeah, so it's a good discussion to have for future design and building of our road system.
Yeah, my thought was some type of a thing going across the road overhead that flash and pedestrians crossing or something. Because I'm not a fan of the bulbouts just because what I see every day happen here in front of my house out here off of Highland Drive and stuff. I mean, every, probably every other day, I almost see people with flat tires trying to make the corner when there's a pickup or something parked at the stop sign. And they try to come around that corner, and their rims hit the thing and pop tires.
I know another thing we've talked about too is the flags. I don't know if they work, but some cities have where to cross. You just grab a little flag, and it's like, it's super bright, so it definitely stands out more. I don't know that it would protect them from a car coming right for them or anything, but.
We've had our engineers look at those intersections and stuff for stop signs and for crossing and stuff, and we'll revisit that and bring it forward for discussion. It's really more complex than just saying, I want a light there, I want flags there or something. It really needs to be studied and vested by our traffic engineer. That's, it's a big point of liability for the city that it's designed correctly. So I'll, we'll revisit what we've looked at in the past and bring it forward for discussion with council.
Well, and there are stop signs there now, right?
Right.
Yeah. It happened this year.
Yeah, no, those stop signs are there, but they have, three people told me that right there at the Arlington Hardware intersection, they went across. They thought the cars were going to stop for them, they started to walk out, and they.
You gotta do eye contact. I do the same thing, but, yeah, I mean, stop signs are there, so maybe we need some traffic patrol in downtown Arlington too of people getting tickets for running those stop signs, which they do regularly. That would be a good thing to do too.
Or that too, plus marking, having them parked away from the corners, like they're not, what is it, 15 feet away from an intersection they're supposed to park?
Well, Paul will discuss that with the traffic engineers. Next was Mike, and then we'll come to Marilyn.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a couple of brief comments concerning housing. And the first comes from the National League of Cities. And they suggest that when it comes to building affordable housing, that something they call tax increment financing. I'm sure we have people on staff that would be familiar with that. It diverts future property tax revenue increases to an economic development project like housing. And as I looked through this and read this, I said, well, that sounds like that multifamily tax exemption. I think that's an example of that. And it's also very closely related to value capture, which we've come across a time or two. And anyway, these are just, this tax increment financing seems to be one of the main ways that you can finance affordable housing. In the, like I say, the multifamily tax exemption, I believe, is that. Then this one comes from the SCT. And I was surprised to learn that Arlington has a lot more housing capacity than its projected population all the way out to 2035. And I was really surprised to hear that, that they consider us, we're not going to get any more lands, urban growth areas, that we have apparently plenty of housing capacity. So it's just a matter of building the right kind of housing, the variety of housing. It's not a matter of adding more land, according to what this report said. And then finally, House Bill 1277, I believe that has passed. And the filing fees can go ahead and be used. This comes from EASC, the Economic Alliance of Stonewall County, that filing fees can go toward homeless programs. And Dave Summers, from of course, our executive director of the county, he said he plans on using the recovery funds that they'll be getting for homeless housing as well. So those are just three brief items I wanted to mention that I've run into in some of the meetings I've been attending. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. You know, this is the first year that the legislature did add tax incremental financing as being illegal. as being illegal in the state of Washington before, but the legislature did add, done it this year. The bill just got signed last week, so all CED departments are looking it over to become familiar with the parameters in it. So, thank you.
Perfect.
Marilyn?
Yeah, I just wanted to backtrack a minute and comment on the crosswalk situation. I know the one downtown in the middle there, it's hazardous, you know, and Arlington Hardware's is too. But I think if we were to go back to a few years ago when we were going to kind of like revitalize our crosswalks, because most of them are so vague that you can't, you can't see them. So I think it would help with pedestrian safety if they were a little more visible to drivers, you know? Even though there's a stop sign, if you really can see the crosswalk, it kind of says, hey, to the driver, this is a pedestrian crosswalk. So I know, I think it was Jan and maybe Deborah and I worked on crosswalk programs several years ago, and I've never seen anything cut that. So I'm, I would to revisit that and try to get some crosswalks done. And then as far on Mike's comment, I think some of the undeveloped area is East Hill or formerly Breakfast Beach, and so that is still undeveloped. And so that is an area that we must address, and we are addressing for using our undeveloped land. So that one is a big one. And that's it for me.
And I would point out too, I'm a fan of the bulbouts for safety, for pedestrian safety, for mixing pedestrians and cars on our streets. And it's no more space than if you were to keep people parking 15 feet from the curb. In fact, it would be less space, and it would eliminate less parking to do bulbouts there. And on a straightaway, you know, I don't know, people should be able to turn a corner without hitting the curb, hopefully. Well, do you have any administrative report this evening?
Just a, just a couple of updates. In response to the governor's directive last week to reopen Washington, just want to let council know that we're taking measures to reopen our buildings after the 4th of July, so the public buildings will be back open to the public. We'll also are planning for our public meetings, like the council meetings, will be back in person after the 4th of July. So we're working on those items right now, so there'll be more information coming about that over the next few weeks. Even though the mask wearing has been relieved a little bit by the governor, we are asking employees and visitors to still remain masked indoors just until we get some direction from Elle and I on how to proceed with that. So that'll also be new information over the next couple of weeks. So just wanted to give council a quick update on those items.
I don't have anything additional this evening either. Madam Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Okay.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Bye.